Bring the December sixteenth, twenty twenty, meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. Ms. Caldwell, we have a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mr. Fallinger?
Here.
Ms. Kryjewski?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Ms. Joseph?
Here.
Ms. Fagan? Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chavon?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here. Mr. Evans, can we have the invocation and the pledge, please?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District. And grant this board in their deliberations this evening the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
All nations, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Alrighty. Alright, we will now hear from our student representatives, Ms. Parker and Ms. Hughes. And use your muted, just so you know, Ms. Parker.
The Grand Academy had a great conference week as the teachers shared updates about the students' progress so far this year. The meetings took place via Zoom. Teachers provided parents with an update on how their child was progressing and discussed how parents and teachers could partner together to support the students' continued academic, social, and emotional growth.
You just gotta be quiet out there.
For Glen Olden School, November kicked off our first Student of the Month recognition. The virtue was thankfulness. Students reviewed why we should practice being thankful. They learned it was important to be thankful for what we have and not dwell on what we don't. When we begin to fixate on what we don't have, negativity takes over. Twenty twenty has definitely taught us a lot about thankfulness. Student of the Month recipients will be announced and awarded when in person returns after December seventh. Another thing to be thankful about, Mr. Stube's morning announcements continue to be a hit with the students and staff. The students are listening attentively when the new PBIS challenges are announced because they want to be entered into weekly drawings. Mr. Stube even took us on a virtual trip to review the evacuation drill so we would be prepared and know what to do in case there's an emergency. On November nineteenth, Glen Olden had Spirit Day. This month was cartoon and video games and Disney characters. Our classrooms were filled with many different characters. A few students were twinning with Ms. Kubino and had the privilege of taking a selfie with her. Students and faculty had fun. Our Scholastic Virtual Book Fair was open to the community from November twenty-third to December sixth. It was definitely different shopping online, but we appreciate the support from the community. Every dollar spent will help benefit our kids. We have some delicious fundraisers coming up in the near future, so keep an eye out on Twitter for their big debuts.
For Norwood, we are hosting our book fair this year virtually. Home and School hosted a Joe Corby's fundraiser. Purchases will be delivered on December sixteenth. This year we held our parent-teacher conferences virtually on Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, and Wednesday, November twenty.
At Prospect Park, our students are really rocking Raz Kids with our students reading more books than ever. In one of our second grade classes, the students have read a combined one thousand eight hundred and sixty-six books this past month. With the close of the first marking period, we were able to recognize nearly one hundred of our middle school students for making honor roll and distinguished honor roll. The students' names were featured in our weekly newsletter, the peak of the week, just in time for Thanksgiving. We held our fall parent-teacher conferences via Zoom, and it was nice to see and hear from our school community and share all of the wonderful successes we are seeing with their children.
On Tuesday, October sixth, Tinacum got a big delivery of brand-new winter coats. The coats were donated by Mainline Honda in conjunction with the Auto Dealers Association of Greater Philadelphia. They have chosen Tinacum School to receive the coats for the past several years. The coats are given out to students in need of one. Thank you to Cindy Mears and Natalie Tozer for organizing this event. On Friday, November twentieth, two of our students, Michaela Geter and Shane Hansen, had Nifty Fifties for lunch. Michaela and Shane were our monthly PBIS winners for showing respect, responsibility, honesty, and safety. Mrs. Cassidy and Mr. Ross handed out the winning expectation tickets to these students and also received a Nifty Fifties lunch. Congratulations to Michaela and Shane. Big excitement at Tinacum School on Thursday, December third. A film crew from HBO came to our school to shoot outside scenes for an HBO special limited series. The show is called Mayor of Easttown and stars Kate Winslet as a detective in a small town in Pennsylvania. All filming was done on the outside of the school building, and the crew was very careful not to disturb the school routine inside of the building. The teachers were told, the teachers, the series, sorry, were told will air in March of twenty twenty-one.
At the high school, December fifth, SATs were canceled. Next SAT scheduled at the high school are on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. December seventh and eighth, college dining. Congratulations to the following students for committing. Billy Kerwood, Monmouth University for softball; John Scabello, Marywood University for lacrosse; Alex Mullin, Cedar Crest University for softball; Nick Mormando, Cabrini University for lacrosse; C.J. Jones, Pennsylvania College of Technology for lacrosse; Jordan Kennedy, Flagler College for lacrosse; and Kyla Valver, University of the Sciences for softball. December eleventh, the HIQ match. This is our first virtual HIQ match of the year. Good luck, Bucks. From December eighth to the twenty-first, there will be a canned food drive, and the competition will be between ninth and eleventh versus tenth and twelfth versus the staff. All canned foods can be dropped off in the main lobby of the high school. On December seventeenth, there will be a blood drive. The blood drive will be held from two PM to seven PM at the Prospect Lodge. Students under eighteen will need a parental form, and any donors between the ages of sixteen and twenty-four will receive a ten-dollar e-gift card by email. The link to sign up is www dot redcrossblood dot org. And if you have any other questions, you can email riley dot keller at interburo sd dot com. And this concludes our report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Parker and Ms. Hughes. Moving on to number three, recognition. Ms. Riley, do we have any? Unmute yourself.
No, we do not, Mr. Phelps. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to number four, public comments. Mr. Evans?
No, sir, we do not. But I'll read the note regarding public comment. Please note that the opportunity for public comment will be through the Zoom platform. All board members have the ability to see and read the comments through the Zoom chat features. The board will take all comments under advisement. Where specific answers are requested, community members are invited to telephone, email, or use the postal service to communicate their questions to the superintendent or board president, who will respond or have appropriate school district personnel respond.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Okay, moving on to number five.
Motion five point one, the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on November eighteenth, twenty twenty be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion five point two, that the following minutes of the regorgi organization meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on December seventh, twenty twenty be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. I got a snow blower outside. He's going past. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next, we will hear from our solicitor, Mr. Pupio.
Good evening, everyone. This is my last report for twenty twenty. It's been a rather dry, uneventful, and, you know, ho-hum year. I wish that were the case. This month has been, has been like, you know, just about every other month since March with a whole host of different topics and changing rules and changing regulations and hurdles that the district administration, the district teachers, the district board, as well as the district solicitor have not had to face before, and it's sort of been a work in progress. Been a challenging year on multiple, multiple fronts, and I thank the board, the administration, and the Interboro community for their support and assistance of the district. The main topic this evening is the reassessment that is still ongoing. Our expert, Jack Coyle, continues to analyze the data, continues to analyze the, continues to analyze the outcome of the appeals, but is still of the firm belief that there are, there is a problem with the numbers in the reassessment, that it is off in a few areas. What a problem with that, the question comes up, why do you care? Well, it is how the board generates its local tax revenue. So just from the beginning, the numbers should be right. It's the county's, the county, and not any individual at the county, not one particular board, the county statutorily is required to provide the accurate reassessment numbers. The problem that our expert believes is, is that they are inaccurate in undervaluing commercial properties to a point where it should be closer to the median in a first revale year, and what's known as the coefficient of dispersion is off. Now, Jack will, Jack Coyle, who is the district expert, will again calculate what he believes the numbers to be after we receive and analyze all of the appeal results, and I will circle back with the board at that time. But the problem of inaccurate numbers and an undervaluation of commercial value results in, could possibly and probably result in the board eventually having to raise taxes to continue to cover this decrease in the valuation in your tax base. I am aware of having represented this board for a number of years, how hard you work with regard to your tax increases, how much time and effort you put in to support the residents of the Interboro School District and to minimize the impact of rising costs and all of the things the district deals with. So it's important to have these numbers right. So we're going to continue to analyze them. The action that I believe is on your agenda this evening is a standard action, doesn't have anything to do with the reassessment. It is the action to simply continue the appellate process in the, that we did not prevail in at the Board of Assessment. Standard motion made every year at this time. The results, the only difference this year, the results came out two weeks later, so the appeal period is two weeks later. Usually, we do this in November so that it is, we have to file by twelve-one. But this year, we have to file by twelve-twenty, twelve-thirty-one, and we're arrowed that under control and in the process. A number of other districts are either bring, either filed today or already filed a mandamus action to demand county provide them with a fuller set of results because statutorily they're required to by a certain date. We did not join that action. We didn't join that action because we don't need those numbers right now. And I didn't believe the litigation was necessarily warranted. The county has finally begun participatory talks with my office and some of the other board members to see if we can get on the same side of an understanding. Hopefully, they'll give a little bit and make some corrections for us, if possible and if legal. But if you hear about that, that's the reason we didn't join it. I believe that, look, here's the bottom line. They're a taxing entity, and we're a taxing entity. And at the end of the day, everybody's using taxpayer dollars to point fingers at each other. That's the last thing we should be doing. I will make every effort possible to make sure that we can get on the same page. As long as that effort is returned, then, then we'll, then we should be able to avoid litigation. But it is very important to this board that the numbers be right and that we reach a result because you'll be bumping up against, next year is a COVID year for values for the commercial. So all of your hotels, all of your parking lots, all of those things are going to come in and get significantly decreased values. That shifts that tax burden to your residents. Your residents will come in with, if the numbers are wrong, the common level ratio. This year, common level ratio revale set at a hundred percent by the county. Next year, it's measured by the state. It'll be below ninety-five percent already. So if your house got assessed at a hundred thousand dollars this year, and you didn't appeal it, and you hear that your step ratio is ninety-five percent, you're going to go in and get your home reduced to ninety-five thousand dollars. Combine that with the commercial, I'm the Italian guy using my hands. Combine that with the commercial issues, and it just compounds yearly for the district. So we need to get these numbers right, and we're working at it. So I apologize for the long report, somewhat of a dry and boring topic, but an important one. Thank you very much, and I wish everyone happy holidays and a happy, healthy, and heck of a much better twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Pupio, and I apologize for having to jump around here. Okay, moving on to number seven.
Motion seven point one, that the attached treasurer's report for the month ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And I don't even know what I did, but I can't get back on the screen. I did something. I'm sorry. I apologize for my picture not being up there. Okay, moving on to the next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion seven point two, that fund dispersments in the amount of three million, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and one cent be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion seven point three, to approve the budget transfers for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Do we have any correspondence, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
Okay, we will go to our committee reports now. Number nine point one, Mr. Chavon, the Audit Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The Audit Committee met on Monday at five forty-five. The audit conducted by Barbara Kane Thornton and Company. Just a few highlights from the audit. Were no findings regarding internal controls over our financial reporting and our federal awards. Last year's audit, there was a finding with the financial statements. The audit this year, the auditors deemed that that issue had been resolved. In terms of the financial highlights of last year's budget, we ended with three point one, three point one nine nine million in our fund balance, which is an increase of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the previous year, which is about a four point six percent of our operating budget. It's estimated for school districts to be between five to eight percent of their operating budget, and it's been a goal of this board to increase our fund balance strategically over the last couple of years. And our estimated cost, or our estimated fund balance at the end of this fiscal year is three point seven million. Obviously, with the next couple of months coming about, you know, it is just an estimated amount, but as you can see, you know, this board has slowly been trying to increase our fund balance. We have an A credit rating, and the last piece is although we did add to our fund balance, there were some precarious situations during this year's budget. Revenues did come in one point three million less than we budgeted, which was a decrease in real estate revenue and parking lot. But fortunately, we were able to control expenditures. Our healthcare came in lower than expected. We held a line on maintenance costs, transportation costs, and overtime wages. So I just want to commend Mrs. Riley and the directors for really tightening the strings, especially with the loss in revenue that came in under what we expected. You know, it could have been a different scenario rather than adding a hundred and twenty-five thousand. It could have been, we could have been put in a pretty bad situation. The audit, shared a few things that are on the horizon that may impact us as a district that we need to be on the lookout in terms of financials. Our buildings are aging, and it costs money to maintain them. As Mr. Pupio just mentioned, the poor economic conditions due to COVID nineteen, the reassessment that can affect our revenue, special education increases, and PIS increases. I'm not sure if the board was aware, the public was aware, but the PIS board met and they are increasing the, the amount that districts are responsible for by, I believe, a percent and a half. So that's, that's an issue that we have to deal with come budget season. So all in all, it was a good audit report for our district. But, you know, it's also sobering because it gives us a reality of the situation that we're in. So again, I just want to thank Mrs. Riley and the directors. Mr. High School always shines at the audit time. The last three, four years, you know, these audits have been pretty good. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavon. I appreciate that. And as you can see, I'm back up. At this time, I would like to excuse our students. If you would like to leave, you're more than welcome to leave before the reports are done. And we appreciate your time and efforts for being on here with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Thank you, Francesca.
Happy holidays, ladies.
Alrighty, moving on to the committee appointments. For the, I guess I'll root them out, Mr. Evans. Finance will be Ed Harris, Mr. Evans, and Justin Chavon will be the chair. And on the GBO, we have Ann Kryjewski, Kelly Joseph, and Glenn Goldsboro will be the chair. Okay, the Board de laance, Ed Harris will be Delaware County Intermediate Unit. Glenn Goldsboro will be at Delaware County Community College. Mr. Chavon will be in legislative, and we are still seeking a community outreach. Okay. I'll let you continue from there, Mr. Evans.
Okay, sir. The finance GBO meetings will be held on the first Monday of each month at seven PM virtually until further notice as follows. January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, February first, twenty twenty-one, March first, April twelfth, May third, June seventh, twenty twenty-one. No finance GBO meetings July and August, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, combined with work session October fourth and November first, twenty twenty-one. And whereas the following matters are presented for action by the Interboro Board of School Directors, therefore be it. From the Office of Personnel, a motion to the following personnel actions be approved, starting with ten point one, going to ten point eight on page eight.
Justin, you're muted.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next up, number eleven, Mr. Evans.
Motion with regret, that the following retirement be approved. Eleven point one, Lisa Emery, learning support teacher at the high school with thirty-two years of service to the district be approved for retirement effective of January twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Myself, I would just like to thank Ms. Emery for her dedication to the district. Thirty-two years, that's a long time. We do appreciate it, and the district appreciates it as well. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next up, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion twelve point one to twelve point seven, that the following items be approved.
Second.
Motiones have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next up, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Special Education, motion that the following items be approved, thirteen point one to thirteen point two.
Second.
Motiones have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved, fourteen point one to fourteen point three.
Second.
Motiones have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, or next up, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Facilities, motion fifteen point one, that the board of school directors approve the quotes with Casey signing warnings for LED signs for five Interboro School District schools at a total cost of ninety-five thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and fifty-five cents to be paid from twenty nineteen bond funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next up, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Finance, motion sixteen point one, that the board of school directors approve the audit and financial statements prepared by Barbara Kane Thornton and Company, LLP, for the school year ending June thirty, twenty twenty.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Myself, I'd like to thank Mr. High School. I know he put a lot of time and effort into this like he does all the time. So, I mean, it's nothing new, but he always goes above and beyond. So we do appreciate him. Marty, you do a good job. Hearing any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion seventeen, that the board of school directors approve the PA REIT Technology Services Agreement with NSAAN Incorporated for January first, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of one thousand forty-nine dollars to be paid from district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion eighteen, that board of school directors approve the second reading of the following policy in the category of operations, eight eighteen contracted services personnel.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion nineteen, that the board of school directors approve the first reading of the following policy in the category of programs, one hundred programs, one oh five dot two, exemption from instruction.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Okay, that ends our motions. Do we have any old business? Hearing none. Do we have any new business? Hearing none. We will now hear from our superintendent, Ms. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Just a few items. First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate Lisa Emery on her retirement. I've known Lisa for many years. She is an excellent special education teacher. She's worked at the high school for many years. I know we've seen a number of retirements this year, and unfortunately, we haven't been able to enjoy those retirements or celebrate them as we normally would. And I know this is, this is difficult and bittersweet. But I just want to congratulate Lisa and really wish her the best and enjoy retirement, even under COVID. and enjoy retirement even under COVID right now. So thank you, Lisa, for, for your dedication and your years of service to Interboro. I'd also like to thank Mr. Fralinger and the AOH Black Checkia Division 4 of Delaware County for providing almost 40 holiday dinners for our families. The social workers worked to coordinate these meals with our families and provided the information to Mr. Fralinger. And all of those families will receive full meal, a full meal for the holiday. So, Mr. Fralinger, thank you so much for that. It's really appreciated, and I know our families will definitely appreciate having those meals at the holiday. So thank you so much.
Thank you for you and your team getting those names together for us.
We were happy to do it. I would also like to thank our social workers and our guidance counselors. For the last couple of weeks, I've been participating in a number of meetings with families, parents, students, our social workers, and our guidance counselors to help students who are experiencing some difficulty, you know, with the virtual models and just issues that are coming up during COVID. And I can't say enough about the amount of hours and the time. And I want to include our deans in that, that these folks have put into contacting students and visiting houses and talking to parents and really going above and beyond to support our kids. I really can't say enough about the work that they do. And, you know, I hope that they realize that we really do appreciate the work that they do. And I know that our families are so grateful and appreciative. But they really do such a good job with the kids. They know how to talk with kids and help to come up with a plan that works for them because we want our kids to be successful and we want our kids to graduate. And COVID has just made this, you know, these things a little bit harder. So thank you to, to those folks for the work that they do in trying, you know, and being supportive of our kids. I'm so impressed and proud to be working with that group. And I'm just amazed when I sit in these meetings and the knowledge that they have. It's really incredible. So thank you to all of them. And finally, just a happy holidays to everyone. I hope that families will have some time to relax as well as our staff during this holiday season. And, you know, please make sure your contact information is updated, your emails, and look for communication that may come out over the holiday season. As we know, you know, things change and we just want to make sure all of our families are getting the information. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Riley. Do we have any comments from the board? Anybody? Myself, I would like to just say happy holidays to everybody and happy birthday to Mr. Chavon. 30 years old today, it's something else. Boy, I wish I was 30. So, if that's, any other comments? Alright, hearing none. The Interboro School District will continue to hold all future meetings remotely until further notice. Please visit the Interboro School District website at www.innurborough.org for further information. On Monday, January 11th, 2021, the Finance GBO Committee meeting will be held at 7:00 PM. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held on Monday, January 18th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held on Wednesday, January 20th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And thank you all for coming, the meeting is adjourned. Bye, everybody.
Bye. Bye. Happy holidays, everybody. Happy holidays.
Vernon, there's the fireplace view. Cozy, snow night, gang.
That's so nice, Michael.